Good evening. This is Jeff Wathers, Chair of the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to call the May 4th, 2022 meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. And with that, I would ask that we establish a quorum, please.
Hey, Mr. Wathers.
I am here.
Ms. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Mr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Klosick? Commissioner Wance?
Here.
Secretary Eisenberg?
Here.
Mr. Chair, please let the record reflect that seven members are present, the most we've had in a while, and we do have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda itself. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are no changes to this evening's agenda.
Well, in that case, the Chair would be happy to entertain a motion that we approve the agenda.
A move where you approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the agenda? Okay, very good. The agenda will stand approved. We'll move on to item six, which is the Administrative Report. Madam Secretary, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our newest member, Stephen Smith. Sorry, this isn't in person for our first meeting, but you get a taste of our virtual meeting format. So would you like to say a few words just to introduce yourself to the group and the viewing audience?
Hi, my name's Stephen. I live over in Manchester. Very happy to be a part of this and very happy and excited to continue to serve, or start to serve, I guess. So, nice to meet everybody.
All right. Well, welcome and thank you for being here, and you'll get indoctrinated soon enough, and we'll have a one-on-one in a few weeks and do our planning onboarding process and get you up and running so that way when you do attend the meetings, you know where we are. But I think this was a perfect meeting for you to be at this evening because we do have so many new members and a lot of turnover in the last few years. I did ask our Planning Commission Attorney, Mr. Aman, to be here to give you Open Meetings Act training, and he'll go over that as the next agenda item as well. And then, again, I'll do this again in person, but Andrew Gray, he is a planner from the city of Westminster. He has joined our planning staff as a planner. We've had an open position, and we were able to meet with Andrew, and he applied, and now he's on board, and he's going to be a great asset to Carroll County and our planning team. So Andrew, did you want to turn on your camera if you can, or say hello?
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Good. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good to be here, working for Carroll County Government.
Well, we look forward to having you as part of our team, so thanks so much and welcome aboard.
Thank you and look forward to it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Andrew. And then that's all I have for this evening's administrative matters. Again, our next meeting will be in person and towards the end of the month, May 17th.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Secretary. And I just want to add my welcome to Stephen. We're so glad to have you onboard. It's so nice to have you here, and I hope you'll find this experience to be enjoyable, sometimes challenging. Personally, I think enriching. We get to deal with things that matter to to our fellow citizens here in the county, so it's really nice to have you onboard, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm very much looking forward to it.
And I want to be wherever Commissioner Wance is because that looks like a better place to be enjoying our meeting this evening.
Just taking advantage of the outside, Jeff, because right now there's no rain and, you know, you gotta, you gotta take advantage of it while you can. So, thank you. And I also want to welcome Stephen. He comes with incredibly, just an incredibly impressive resume, and I think he will fit in and be an integral part of this group. So, welcome aboard, Stephen. And how can you go wrong with a guy who lives in District One? And I'm not going to get that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Very good. Well, then we'll move on to item seven and Open Meetings Act training. And I think you had mentioned that Jim Aman is going to lead us through this. So Jim, floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would also just like to welcome Mr. Smith. You know, you're going to be part of an exclusive club, so exclusive that you get to learn about the Carroll County Ethics Laws and Open Meetings Act that now applies to you as a member of the Planning Commission. So I'll get started.
Thank you.
Here, trying to figure out why the slideshow is not working. Okay. So can you, can people see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, state law requires certain boards and public officials and public bodies to operate in a manner open to the public. The state passed what's known as the Open Meetings Act, the OMA, because it's essential in a democratic society that except in limited and special but appropriate circumstances that the public business be conducted openly, publicly, and the public be allowed to observe the performance of its public officials and deliberations and all the decisions involved in making public policy. So, the Maryland Open Meetings Act, as I was saying, so we have the scope. So, the Open Meetings Act applies to all public bodies in the state, and under Maryland law, local planning commissions are considered a public body and therefore are subject to the Act. The commission was created by law, and the commission members were appointed to this board by Carroll County Commissioners. So you're, you're bound by the Open Meetings Act. So getting into sort of the heart of the Act, it's what is a public meeting? So, the Open Meeting Act, it only applies when the Planning Commission meets, and a public body under the law meets when it convenes a quorum of the body to consider or transact public business. So two requirements there. You have to meet and have enough for a quorum and consider or transact the public business. So the following circumstances constitute a meeting under the Act. So a quorum of all public body members present at the actual meeting, like tonight, a quorum would be deemed present by virtue of communications that would rise to the level of a meeting. So like, if you guys were on, you know, the Planning Commission member text group or an email chain, that would be considered a public, a public meeting. If the quorum comes together by chance or for social reasons, but nevertheless use that occasion to discuss public business, that's a, that's a meeting that's covered by the Open Meetings Act. And if members conducted public business by a device purposely designed to avoid the requirements of the Act, so that that would be sort of an email chain or a text group where you guys are kind of talking offline to kind of get around the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. So a quorum is a majority of all members of a public body, and for this Planning and Zoning Commission, the quorum is four members, and I think I can speak for Linda and Laura that we are very grateful to have the new members on, so hopefully we'll have no quorum issues in the near future. And a quorum is deemed present in several ways at an actual Planning Commission meeting like tonight, or as I mentioned before, through the exchange of communication, emails, phone calls, text messages that rise to the level of a meeting through an invasive device to avoid the meeting openly. So again, any communications you guys have together, if it's four of you guys having a conversation together and you're discussing public business, transacting public business, the Open Meetings Act applies. So, public bodies have been found to have met in the following circumstances. I just wanted to give some examples. A quorum of members in one place at one time can be created regardless of the group's location or intent to gather. Example, like if enough members met at a coffee shop by happenstance, and that would create a quorum, but there would be no violation of the Public Meetings Act as long as they didn't discuss public business. And depending on the circumstances, the exchange of electronic communications among the quorum can constitute a, a meeting. So moving on to notice and agendas. So, under the Act, we're required to give reasonable public notice and make the agenda available, and that's basically as soon as practical after... I'm sorry, if there's someone speaking? I guess not. I'll just keep going. So basically, we need to give reasonable public notice, and that's as soon as practical after the fixed date and time of the next meeting. So it can't be last minute. We can't, you know, for example, like today's meeting started at six. We couldn't at 5:45 just say, hey, we're having a Planning Commission meeting tonight. That's not allowed. And we need to make the agenda available before the meeting that contains all known items or topics to be discussed and indicates whether the public body expects to go and to close during any portion of the meeting. There's some leeway under the law that allows the Commissioner, or any public body really, to add items on the agenda as long as they weren't sort of known beforehand. If there's sort of an agenda piece that the commission knows about, it can't just keep that, that item off the agenda until the last minute and then add it on if it knew about it prior to, prior to that time. Now, the open meeting requirements of the Open Meeting Act, kind of the most important part. So the public has the right to observe a meeting, and the public has a right to access to a physical meeting space, which means that Planning Commission meetings or any public meetings can't be held in a place where the, the public is not permitted, like a detention center, which actually happened and was an actual violation of the Open Meetings Act. And the public also has a right to a virtual meeting space. So there are sometimes circumstances where the Planning Commission can close the session to the public. Under the statute, there's 15 exceptions that permit the public body to exclude the public. But for our purposes, the exceptions that are most relevant and common are personnel matters, privacy or reputation issues, and legal advice. And the law lays out a pretty technical and detailed process on, on how to go about that and providing notice and notes of what was discussed during the, during the closed session. But for the Open Meetings Act, that was sort of your thousand-foot view of, of what the statute requires. Pretty, it's a lot of common sense, so I was just wondering if anyone had any questions.
Pete, you have a question? You good? All right. Jim, I just have one quick question, and that is, first of all, thank you. That was great. Is there any requirement that we receive this training periodically?
Yes. So, under the Land Use Article, you are required to, to take training in, you know, various parts of, I guess, the Land Use Article and Planning and Zoning. And part of that is the Ethics and Open Meetings Act. Just so members are aware about the kind of, you know, the state policy towards transparency and, and having, you know, the public be able to witness and participate in, in our meetings. So that's something that, that the Planning Commission members have to do when they, when they're newly appointed.
And then I guess, related to that, can it be that we have a designated member or someone who takes the training? Or it has to be the entire, I mean, I know we all do it, and Stephen will do it in the coming weeks, but as we go forward, can, can one of us receive training and, or does the whole commission have to receive it?
Best practice for all the members to receive training, I mean technically, yes. But it would be best practice because if there's a situation where that member who received the Open Meetings Act training, for whatever reason, wasn't able to make it to a meeting, and the meeting went on, and there was some issue that hit him off, and it was like, well, no one was trained in the Open Meetings Act, then there, there could be an issue there under the statute, so.
Okay. Well, it seems like this ought to be something that maybe you can put on our agenda. At least what, annually? Is that, would that be?
Yeah, I think it would have to.
Okay.
So Jim, I have a question. Has anything changed with the virtual meeting aspect for open meetings? And I'm sorry if I missed this. I stepped out of the room for a minute.
No, no, it hasn't. Virtual meetings, especially, and the General Assembly sort of addressed this due to COVID. They kind of, they treat it just like it was a, a regular meeting, like an in-person meeting. So all the requirements of an in-person meeting are applied to, to virtual meetings as best, you know, practical.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Aman?
Jim, it's Mike Kane. I, I know, is, is there a requirement for recording the meetings? I know we, we keep, there's minutes kept.
Right. There are, right. There are minutes kept, and that, that's a requirement. That's not only a requirement under the Open Meetings Act, but on also the Land Use Article that governs the Planning Commission. Like I said, before, the Open Meetings Act covers every public body. So that's, you know, the Board of Commissioners, County Councils, General Assembly, and all the commissions, and basically any public body that does public business. And yes, there have to be minutes, and it, it's not required to be recorded as long as there are minutes and those minutes are published. The, the General Assembly actually, this past session, which ended a few weeks ago, added more stringent requirements on when the minutes of a meeting had to be posted. I think it's like a week after the, at least a week after the, the meeting ended.
Place, right. And if four of us would happen to meet in a coffee house and discuss public business, one of us would be responsible for entering or submitting those notes as, as minutes to the meeting and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. So it would just be best not to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I just add?
Because then the public's not aware, and there, there was no, no agenda, so.
No, it's really sticky. I completely agree. I hear you.
But yeah.
Can I just add a comment? Sorry, about the minutes. We're talking about the minutes. So I just, just procedurally, how you get the minutes and what happens to the minutes is usually the day after the meeting, I will do the draft minutes, and then they go through. If it's for a business meeting, I do send a copy to Development Review for them to read and review from their projects, if they have any corrections or changes, and they go to Linda as well for her changes, and then they're sent to you all for them to discuss as we do at the meetings, if there are any other changes and to approve them. I don't post them until the meeting where they've been approved. And sometimes that can be more than a week, only because we haven't had a meeting or something like that. Just so that everyone knows like what the process is for the, behind the scenes.
And actually, Jim, I think the law ended up being that they had to be approved minutes. So they ended up striking, you know, like really, okay.
Because originally, like, it had to be like the next day, and then the Maryland Association of Counties kind of brought up the point that Laura was bringing up, like, well, normally minutes are approved at the following meeting. So it just practically, that's how it should work.
Well, I will say, my experience on the Planning and Zoning Commission has been, the word punctilious comes to mind. I mean, we pay great attention to detail in terms of what we can and can't do. And I know that even when we've had breaks and we've, like a lunch break, if we all go somewhere to get lunch, we, we're very careful to say, you know, we're together, but we're not discussing any, any business, and we don't. And even during any breaks, when we step off the dais, you know, we make sure that we are not talking about public business if there are four of us or more together. So I can just tell you, I'm happy to represent that we are very careful to make sure that we are in compliance with that. We want to make sure everybody can hear our deliberations and our comments, and the public can, can offer their own as we make any decisions that affect the good of the, of the county.
I don't think this requires a motion, but Laura, please make sure that the minutes reflect that Jeff used the word punctilious. Thank you.
It's my word-of-the-day calendar. It's going immensely, right? Very good. Any, Jim, Jim, anything else for us?
No, I think unless anyone has any further questions.
Do that also cover the ethics portion, or are we just in open meetings?
I mean, I could cover the ethics if you want me to. I would need to re, have my screen reshared.
I think you said just like an additional few minutes, if we could, because we also...
And that's actually common sense issues, but.
Yeah, that would be great, just because also we just did our annual disclosure update for the Ethics Board. That's something that this group has to do annually, is disclosure holdings within Carroll County. And so if Jim can just briefly go over that for you, I think that would be really helpful, too. And then that'll cover the major stuff, given our new membership as well, and a good refresher for all of us. Thanks, Jim.
So again, ethics, it's, this is very common sense, common sense stuff, and I'll try to be very quick. So obviously, everyone here knows the purpose of an ethics statute. It's just to prove to the public and show to the public that the public has confidence that the decisions you're making as Planning Commission members are impartial, you're using independent judgment, and you don't have any financial interests that are in conflict with any public interest or anything that you're discussing or making decisions on. So the Ethics Ordinance applies to all Carroll County officials, employees, and all boards and their members, including the Planning Commission members. So most importantly, I think, for the purposes of the, the Planning Commission is just the prohibited conduct and conflicts of interest. So while there are exceptions, as there are exceptions to everything in the law, members cannot participate in any matter to which your knowledge that you or a relative of yours has an interest, in any matter in which the following is a party. So a business entity in which you have a direct financial interest, of which you should reasonably be expected to know, or a business entity for you or a relative who is an officer, director, trustee, employee. So what this kind of means for you is that if you become aware of a conflict of interest that affects your ability to vote impartially on a matter before the commission, you must refuse it. And the process to do that would be to inform the Chair, step away from the bench, and not participate in any further discussion. As a conflicted member, you're considered absent for the portion of the meeting and may be allowed to participate as a citizen when the commission is receiving the, the public comment on that matter. and uh, or accept a gift from anyone who's conducting business with the county or has financial interests or is a lobbyist of uh, any kind. Um, you, you are allowed, you know, reasonable beverages or reasonable um, expenses, meals, beverages, uh, to receive ceremonial gifts, um, unsolicited gifts of uh, nominal value or tickets or free admission, um, to something that's generally open uh, to the public. And uh, just to piggyback off of what uh, Linda was referring to earlier is um, as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you need to file a uh, financial disclosure report no later than April thirtieth of the uh, calendar year uh, during your tenure. And as members of uh, the board, you need to disclose um, any interest or employment which could uh, require disqualification from participation on the commission. The business entities you're a part of and gifts, um, if any. And uh, I think um, those are the uh, most relevant uh, sections of the county ethics ordinance uh, that you should be aware of. So again, if you have any questions regarding the uh, ethics ordinance or the Open Meetings Act, I'd uh, love to uh, love to answer them.
So first of all, thanks for doing that spur of the moment. That uh, was very impressive, Jim. The uh, I, just a couple of quick questions because these come up sometimes. And you, and I might be wrong about this, so that's why I want to put it out there. My recollection is that we changed our rules of procedure a year or two ago to address the situation where a member uh, recuses themselves, they step away from the bench, they're absent. So the alternate can then participate as a full member for that um, matter that's then pending. Is that, is that your recollection?
Correct. That's under our, uh, that's under the Carroll County Planning Commission administrative rules. That's correct.
Right. And I think we changed them to clarify that in the past. I'm not sure it was clear or maybe it was the opposite. Um, and do you mind speaking to maybe the difference, if, if you feel comfortable doing this, the difference between recusal and abstention?
Yeah, absolutely. So a recusal is when you know, or you should know that you have some sort of a conflict of interest with an issue. That's, it's your responsibility to recuse yourself, which is alerting the chair that says, hey, you know, I have a financial interest in this business that has a development, has a site plan in front of the commission. So I can't be a part of the discussion, can't be a part of the decision. I'm just basically for that agenda item, I'm not a member of the Planning Commission, I'm absent. Um, so that's a recusal. And you have to do it under that circumstance. You can abstain uh, from voting on any issue for any reason you want. I mean, that's a practice that uh, we don't favor, but you're allowed to abstain from um, voting on any issue. But you don't have that requirement where um, the issue you're voting on, you have some sort of conflict of interest or financial interest in.
Thank you. And I think what I've seen in practice, at least with our group, is that where the conflict of interest standard is not met, you know, you don't have a direct financial interest in whatever's appearing before you. But there might be a relative or close friend or something where there's an appearance of a conflict or maybe just calls into question whether you appear to be uh, objective uh, or impartial. I've seen any of us have said, you know, under those circumstances, I'll abstain. Um, and I think the other consequence is if you abstain, then the alternate does not have a right to vote in your, in your place. Okay.
That's correct. Cause you're still um, present, whereas if you recuse, you're absent.
Right, right. Excellent. Maybe too much detail, but I figure while we're on the subject, might as well uh, might as well uh, take a look in the weeds. Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I will say, uh, this is Commissioner Lance, uh, that I'm proud of the fact that Carroll County is one of the most transparent counties in the state. In my work with the Maryland Association of Counties, I've seen how others uh, do these meetings. I've watched that there, as there have been violations of many meetings across the state. Uh, but it's important to know that we pay really close attention to this. And to take it a step further, uh, we just went through our budget process, which by the way, is entirely done in front of the cameras. So uh, there is no other county in the state of Maryland that does their budget like we do. Uh, and that's incredibly challenging to do because when you're in front of the camera, you have to be, you, you know, you have to be mindful of the fact that you're going to be talking about people, uh, positions, et cetera. So uh, I hope the public understands that Carroll uh, is, is really, really good with conducting uh, these, these open meetings. And uh, I can't think of the last time that there was an ethics violation uh, with any of the electeds here. Uh, so I just want to make that point because I think it's critically important for folks to understand that we do take this incredibly serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, it is something to be proud of. Uh, and we certainly take it seriously. So Jim, thank you for coming in tonight during the presentation. Um, and I think doing this at least annually is a, be, you know, a good thing to do. We will move on then to uh, item eight, which is agriculture and conservation zoning text uh, discussion. So I will turn the floor over to Linda, I guess, to walk through with us.
Yeah, um, and if I can share my screen control room, please. They tried to give me control earlier and I didn't want to take it. All right, can you all see my screen? Perfect. Um, GoToMeeting has gotten so much better because now I can see what you see. It gives you like a little inset which we did not have before. So I like that, I like the improvements to GoToMeeting. Um, so at our last regularly scheduled meeting in April, we had a brief presentation by Hannah Weber toward the end of the meeting regarding our agriculture conservation districts and um, accessory dwelling units. So she gave you a very brief presentation. I'm going to go through that again quickly just to kind of refresh your memory. And what we are looking for tonight is direction on where you want to go with ADUs. Um, in terms of keeping our code as written, um, with the attached component, or if um, looking at our code and making adjustments to allow detached as well. So we're looking for direction on that. And then if yes, that you want to see us move uh, toward having legislation that allows for detached ADUs, um, what restrictions would you want to go with that? Such as size limitations, distance limitations from the primary principal residence, things like that. So with that, um, and I also have with us tonight, um, some of our concept team members and um, staff that worked on this. So Hannah Weber and Tiffany Foster intimately familiar with this, um, as well as Price. And then I know um, Chris Heine and um, Jay um, have been very involved in this as well. During our work group discussions with the Ag team, I mean, this was very um, very, it was talked about a great deal, um, and no consensus was made. Um, you all received a piece of paper the other week, an informational um, paper from Land and Resource Management about their particular stance um, regarding detached ADUs. So with that, our current Ag um, code allows for one or two family dwelling units currently on site. And I'll have some picture examples. Um, plus an attached ADU. And I'm, Jay can clarify uh, this when we get uh, on with our presentation. But my understanding from talking to zoning um, is that you can have one attached ADU per one or two family duplex. But I don't believe both units, if you have a duplex, gets an attached ADU for each one. But, but again, I, I need, I need a clarification on that. We had some discussions um, with his staff and um, I think they had some internal discussions as well. Conservation district um, only allows for an attached ADU. They do not, that district does not allow for the two-family dwelling. So currently in Ag, we can do this. So this is a typical uh, duplex. Um, and as you can see, there's two separate entrances. Um, they have two separate addresses for each entrance within the, the duplex. I mean, this is what's currently allowed in our county code. So we already have that, that, that two full, I mean, a duplex, you, one could argue is like, almost like a townhome, just two. Um, so it allows for two full families to already be on that property. Um, where an accessory dwelling unit um, would not really be conducive to an entire family um, to be living in that situation. But how our code's currently written is that we do allow two families and an attached ADU on our Ag zone. And so again, in our Ag code, one fifty-eight oh seven oh, we do allow two family, and this is, I made this myself. As you can see, I'm very graphically inclined with my, my clip, uh, my screen capture here and try to put together two single houses into a duplex. So I'm sorry about that. But that's exactly what we're talking about is two distinct units with two distinct addresses on an agricultural site. Conservation does not allow for the two family, just the Ag. So again, what is an ADU? As we said before, it's an accessory dwelling unit, but it is not a full uh, dwelling unit, so to speak. It's accessory to the primary principal use. And this case would be a residence in either the agricultural zone or the conservation zone. So we're allowing an accessory dwelling unit um, that shares a single family lot with a larger primary dwelling. Um, you know, these, we've heard in recent years, the term of granny flats or even tiny houses on a piece of property. Um, they can be attached or detached. I'm just speaking in general terms now. Um, and then, you know, what do they provide? They provide practical housing options for families of elderly, disabled, empty nesters, young adults um, within your property, but not really part of your, they don't have a bedroom in your home. So some different examples, as you can see from um, the graphics is you could have a detached and attached. You know, some people take a loft um, or an attic space and convert that as well to a, a separate unit um, or basement, you know, and have a separate entrance. Um, a, a lot of things, times we see above the garage or even a garage converted. Um, either attached or detached garage converted into an accessory dwelling unit. So those are all very, we've seen all of these um, throughout the county, state, nation. I mean, this is, you know, kind of, this is pretty typical. So what do we currently allow? Again, um, in our code is a portion of a single family dwelling that shall provide complete independent living facilities. So again, we're talking, you know, it has a, a area for sleeping, eating, cooking, but it's separate from the main living area. Even if it's in the basement, it would have like a separate kitchen, bathroom, a, a complete area to be able to be self-contained. Um, and we're talking the same thing with detached as well. So in the detached, we're talking on the primary lot, but physically separate from the primary dwelling. So these could be in terms of a detached garage that's converted to an ADU or um, a, a tiny house, separate from the main dwelling that would be accessory to, um, and subordinate to the main primary residence. Um, both types of ADUs must have direct access from the outside. So even if you have an, an attic that's converted to an apartment, and you actually see a lot of this on Main Street in Westminster where they have, you know, two or three levels. Sometimes we're split into apartments, but let's just say one of those is an accessory dwelling. There is a separate stairwell that goes to that entrance on that second or third floor. Um, in our current code, the property owner must occupy one of the units on site. So whether that be the primary unit or the ADU. Um, say for instance, I'm elderly, I don't want my big home, but I don't want to leave my, my, my property any longer, then I would have um, an ADU and I might live on that, but then rent out my big home to a family, let's just say. Um, we do require additional off-street parking spaces and um, the same regulations for well and septic infrastructure um, have to be met for the Carroll County Health Department. Um, the differences in regulation of attached and detached ADUs is that attached have a size limitation of eight hundred square feet or a third of the floor area of the original dwelling, no more than two bedrooms, and they are allowed in both Ag and Conservation District. The detached, so this is a little misleading within our code. Um, it's not very straightforward in how it's written because we really don't allow a true detached accessory dwelling unit in Ag, and that's where we're coming to you in Conservation as it's currently written. Um, because to be a true ADU, it must be subordinate to the primary dwelling. The only way we can get a secondary ADU detached is to have that lot be able to be built upon. So then you could just build a full house. The point of this is to allow for the accessory component and a smaller affordable living space. Um, and maybe only constructed on lots that are eligible to be subdivided and they have no size limitation. So again, you can build a full home. What's being, with the direction we're seeking tonight is having a detached dwelling allowed on an unsubdividable lot that is restricted by distance and size limitations. That would be the guidance we are, we're seeking. Um, so again, as I said earlier about the work group uh, recommendations, um, is that the size limit of accessory dwellings currently for the attached is up to eight hundred square feet. Um, the work group recommendation was to remove the one-third stipulation, just keep it at the eight hundred um, square feet maximum for the accessory dwelling. Um, and then uh, for the work group recommendations, um, to codify the zoning administrator's requirements of attached ADUs must be no more than fifteen feet away from the principal connect, uh, principal dwelling connected by a livable space. So for instance, um, we were saying that you can't have like a dead space. You can't have like a breezeway or um, some other type of un, uh, conditioned, uh, heated, um, unlivable area attaching the two. Um, and then as far as the detached goes, um, there was no consensus um, from the group itself on how to handle that. Um, there were some camps that thought, you know, detached, if you have the same parameters as the attached, there is no difference. It's not doubling the density. Um, it's just a different location. So you're just moving the location from here to here. Um, and the other components that uh, some in the group are struggling with is that, is that doubling density. Um, and we're already allowing two units in the form of a duplex, um, so to speak, on Ag as it is anyway. So how would this be different if you choose to do an ADU instead? So just a couple of issues again, as I just said about the increasing in density, the code currently allows two family dwellings, as I showed in the picture before, um, on a single lot, and that's a by right. There's no special exception, conditional, nothing with that. Um, and limiting the size and distance from the main dwelling would keep the ADU from becoming a separate additional dwelling. I know there's some concern that with them, we would have a separate additional dwelling and at some point in time, someone could subdivide that off. That is not the intent and that can be codified with this is that the accessory is accessory. It has to stay with the principal um, permitted use and could not be subdivided off. Um, and as far as well and septic, septic implications, because we're talking about areas on well and septic and the Ag and Conservation Zone in um, our discussions with the Health Department, two things would happen. If you build it brand new, let's say with a brand new home and you're building a detached um, ADU with that, you can put it on one septic system. It would just be sized appropriately for the number of bedrooms, bathrooms. And basically you would need, you know, roughly three acres to, to meet all of those distance requirements from well and septic, um, having the septic reserve. Um, or if you are building a um, addition that is an ADU that wouldn't tie into your main septic, you would have to build a separate septic system then to meet those requirements for the detached um, ADU. Or you'd have to replace your entire septic system to accommodate both. So the Health Department, um, you know, they would be the ones to regulate those options for you. Um, and then again, if the property's sold, you know, there was some concern about subdivision. Um, all the current regulations with attached would remain in place with detached. Again, just changing location, they don't have to be stuck together. You can have that separation. Um, including the inability to subdivide. So that would be um, some of the restrictions that could be imposed if the guidance is to continue to investigate and what Some of the restrictions that could be imposed if the guidance is to continue to investigate and what would legislation look like coming out of this effort? And so again, that's what we're here for this evening or just to even start the discussion. If we don't come to consensus or we choose not to move forward, then that's what this group's recommendation is. But is it to keep the code as written? And then our suggestion would be to change the name from. A, an AD, an accessory dwelling unit on a subdivisible lot to basically a secondary dwelling unit. The reason we have this, and you can do this in the code if you have a, a lot that's eligible for subdivision. Again, I would ask Jay to step in if, if I'm not explaining this correctly. Is that you don't have to subdivide. Or have a site plan come in if you're going to do another home on a lot that has two development rights. Does that make sense?
What, what that is, is if you have a. A lot that is eligible to be subdivided. Then you could build a second home on the property with no size limitations. But where you put it would have to make it eligible so that when you subdivide the property, you would have a legal lot surrounding it. So basically, like I say, if you have a single family home on. Let's say six acres. And the lots eligible to be subdivided to create two, three acre lots. And yes, you could build a unlimited size detached accessory dwelling unit on it. But it would have to be placed so that you could create two lots. Around it if. The property owner wants to sell. The other property. The. Like I say, that, that you don't have to subdivide it at that time. You can just build the second dwelling unit on your property. But you are eligible to have it subdivided so that in the future. For whatever reason, if you needed to sell it or you want to sell it, you can create a lot around that house. And it would be a legal lot. When that, for that house. So you'd be able to. Make it a totally separate single family dwelling unit on that other lot.
So, so that's what's allowed to. So it's really not. So then what we're saying is that's not really an accessory dwelling unit. That's just having two homes on a lot that can be subdivided off. So if the direction is to not move forward with having a true detached accessory dwelling unit. Then let's change the wording in our code and not call it that. Just call it. Or secondary dwelling unit on the property. And we can work through that if that's the decision that's made. But again, or create a true detached accessory dwelling unit that's allowable on lots that are not subdivivable. With certain restrictions and some of the restrictions we laid out would be almost exactly what's. The restrictions with the attached. A square foot limitation and a distance from the primary residence. That an owner must occupy one of the two dwellings, whether it's the principal or the secondary or the accessory dwelling. Things like that. And that's, given your guidance, we can come back with a proposal for that. And then just, you know, here are some possible restrictions. As I discussed, the eight hundred foot size, three acre minimum lot requirement. No more than forty or fifty feet away from the principal dwelling, no more than two bedrooms. And then again, continue that concurrent regulation of one of the dwellings must be occupied by a property owner. And then I thought these pictures here were pretty nice examples of accessory dwellings. As you can see from the little circle with the dash line, this one is a garage in the back of the house that's been converted. This is almost like a tiny home off the shared driveway for a particular main unit. And then the one to the far right is more of a rural situation where they have a garage that's been converted. With an apartment on top as an accessory dwelling unit. So that is all I have for the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on the discussion on how you'd like us to move forward as a group.
So I guess I'll open it up and Pete. If we were in person, I would kind of like call on you. So since we're here, Pete, do you have any questions you'd like to put forward?
I, I hate saying I do, but, but I don't really have an axe to grind. I just kind of want to know. Get a better sense for what we think as a group and maybe group think is a good thing, maybe it's a bad thing, but. If, for instance, when we do something like this. Do we also put a limit or, or some sort of restriction on how many people can, can? And again, I, I don't care. I just kind of want to know what we're thinking. Do we put a limit on how many people can occupy a dwelling like this that are unrelated? I mean, do we care about something like that?
We don't regulate that anyways. Even a single family, you can have. You can cram into a single family home as you'd like. So we don't regulate people. I think for Jay, that would be very hard too, to regulate. Family, family unrelated. If there's a zoning violation with regard to that, I mean, Jay is going to explain. That a little more. I think the size limitation would be. You know, if you could put eight hundred square feet, I mean, what people can cram into any space that they feel is comfortable for their living situation. But I would think the two bedrooms and the eight hundred square foot would really limit having, you know, ten people in a house.
Yeah, like, like I say, currently, our regulations, we have none. That regulate the number of people in a house. We can't say like it has to be immediate family or anything of that nature. It could be ten different people living in the one house, not related. And we don't care. Hey, we don't have anything on the books to. Say that that's a problem, but it's impossible to enforce. There's no way. I or my staff can determine how many people are living in a house at any one time. So like I say, there is no limit on how many people. And there are quite a few houses in the county that I know of that are small houses. Eleven hundred, twelve hundred square feet. They might have ten or twelve people living in them.
Right, Jay. And, and again, I, I, you know, I, I, I'm not going to go back to the horror stories of, of the old fraternity house. That we rented in Grove City, Pennsylvania. But I'll just tell you that, you know, it was an interesting situation because again, the neighbors didn't buy into us as a fraternity renting that house. And having parties there Wednesday, Friday and Saturday night. Even though Grove City is a pretty mellow campus. You can imagine the amount of traffic that was going in and out of there when we had ninety fraternity brothers. And I was just sitting here wondering if, I don't even know if that's even a problem in like Westminster or, or further out. Whether where, you know, you have college students maybe renting and sharing homes. I don't know if it's a problem or not, or something that we even need to be concerned about. So that was the first question I had. And then.
Well, I'd actually to clarify, Pete, how is that an ADU issue? Right. So I think that's more of a blanket rental issue and that's one thing you can't do in Carroll County. Or one thing we don't do in Carroll County, we don't regulate rentals. And they don't have, some jurisdictions, if you're, I'm going to rent my home, I need to file with my local jurisdiction to say I'm a rental. We don't do that here. So I guess keeping it in terms of ADUs, I'm not sure we would have that issue with multiple people in an ADU. At that large of a scale. Now maybe in the city of Westminster, where they allow multi-family in a single family home. That might be a different situation, but that's out of our jurisdiction, so to speak.
Yeah, you know, and, and again, Linda, I, I'm just asking questions. Again, I don't have a, an axe to grind one way or the other. And then the other, the other question I had was. You know, is there not? Is there not some sort of distance, minimum distance away when we're talking about a detached unit? Wouldn't we want there to be at least a minimum distance to where they're not? They're not, it's at least this far away to create that, that sense of detachment. And, and also again, from a code standpoint, from a fire safety standpoint. That I think that that, that space might be important to somebody having distance between the two dwelling units.
So we're not proposing a minimum distance because you can have attached now. So you're attached, right? So for detached, what we would say though is a maximum distance. So that way, and you would still be. Required to follow all the setback requirements that would occur anyway with, with a neighbor. So you, so you're not up against, we don't want you to be in the back corner of a ten acre farm or farmette. You know, we actually don't want you that far away. We want a reasonable distance because that almost does become like a separate dwelling. We want this to be definitely very accessory to the primary principle. So no more than is what we're suggesting. Because it can be attached, but we don't want you more than split.
And then the last question I'll throw out is. You know, it would make sense to me that. From the neighbors might, might object to people parking grass and just all over the place. And so it would make some sense to me that the number of parking spaces, there'd be a relationship between the size of the unit that's built. And the number of bedrooms or, but again, you know, Jay, you're saying, we don't know how many people are there. We don't want to regulate that. I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, visually, what do we, the county want to try to project? And, and, and. The relationship between the parking that is provided and the size of the building. Those are the, those are. And again, you think they're good.
We're talking three acre minimum and we're talking ag and conservation. So I don't think you'd have those residential conflicts. That you would have in a more dense situation. So you have the space. So in our current code, and we're suggesting the same thing as in the current code. Two parking spaces and it's a maximum of two bedrooms. So again, you, you're really limited. And I think the conflicts that, that we would be talking about with neighbors would, would. Look, anything can happen anywhere. You know, people can make stuff up. People can feel put out for any reason. However, I think on three acres in ag and conservation, those interactions are going to be minimized.
And, and just that you know. For anybody's single family dwelling anywhere in the county, we require a minimum two parking spaces for that. So that's a standard for. Is, is two parking spaces. So now you have to provide more. Whether it's attached or detached way it is.
So Janice, do you have any, any questions or comments?
Yeah, well, yes. I'm a little concerned with the maximum eight hundred. I've seen a lot of families that want to come together and I'm talking about basically the attached. But, you know, it may be a four thousand square foot house with a twelve hundred basement. And if it's out of ground, a lot of them will take and use that as their living space down there. So when you say it can only be eight hundred square feet. Then that makes it a little bit awkward for the balance of that use for that basement. So it's, I would, I like the one-third without stipulating, you know, a maximum of eight hundred.
So Jay, that's the current code, correct? So it's whatever's the greater of the two, a third of the space or eight hundred square feet?
Yeah.
It's, it's, yes. So it's a maximum of eight hundred square feet or one-third of the livable area of the main dwelling. That's important also because when you're counting livable floor area, you're not counting things like garages. Bathrooms, closets, hallways. Walk-in closets, they're not counted in that square footage. It's the livable spaces, which is your bedrooms, your living room, your dining room, your kitchen. A den or something along that line. They're counted, but the small things, like I say, the hallways, the closets. The bathroom, they're not necessary, they're not considered livable floor area. So it's one-third of that floor area, not necessarily the size of the house.
So Jay, is it the greater of the two or is it eight hundred the cap? So it's.
It's, you, it's like you say. We say, like I said, the maximum's eight hundred or up to one-third of the livable floor area. You know, you can go all the way up to that. If you have a three thousand square foot house, you can go up to a thousand square feet. If you have a. A larger house, one-third of that livable floor area, you can go up to. Now, most attached units that we've seen. Generally around the eight hundred to nine hundred square feet because there's not a lot of. Three thousand, four thousand square foot houses with livable floor space. You might have a four thousand house, square foot house with a three car garage, a large attic. Or, you know, a loft area or. You know, unfinished basement, an unfinished basement is not livable floor area. If it's finished, yes, but if it's unfinished, it's not counted. So there's not a lot of houses that are over that. Three to four thousand square feet in that county. There are some. But like you say, it's going to be one-third of their limit.
So then let's, so just, that is for currently in the code attached. So the attached, we already allow, and then we can continue to keep that in there. But for the detached, either you could keep with that or limit it to eight hundred square feet total.
One thing about the detached. Right, with detached. You know, the thing is. In accessory dwelling unit, it's, it has to be, you know, secondary to the main house. That's why, you know, Lynn is recommending if we do a detached. On a lot that's not subdivitable, we have a limit on the square footage. So it doesn't become bigger than the main house. And like I say, another requirement is that the owner of the property has to live in one of the two houses. It doesn't matter which one. But they still have to live in one of the two. So if you build a detached unit. And then you sell your house and the next guy comes in and buys it. And he wants to rent both the main house and the accessory dwelling unit out. He can't do that. He has to live in one of those two units. So, you know, that's a restriction that. Even then it's, it's hard to enforce, but it, it is enforceable.
I think about the detached. I would prefer to see it like a thousand square feet maximum because I sold a lot of senior housing projects. And I can tell you a thousand square feet is even tight with two bedrooms. A nice little living room and kitchenette. So I, I. I'm having a hard time. Two hundred square feet because that makes it even tighter, I think. And as I always say to the developers, when they're looking at that and they're like, well, throw this in there. And I said, yeah, they might be older, which a lot of the accessory dwelling units are for, but not dead yet. Said they like theirs.
Janice, any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
I, I don't really see, I mean, you know, you're giving the image if you have a detached, that you're giving people more lot right. And I don't really see the real purpose on changing what we already have. I don't. I mean, Jay, is there any particular reason in there that you see? That we need to change what we already have?
I think a while back, we had a case come before us that somebody wanted to build. Convert a detached garage into living area for, I think their grandparents, and it was detached. And their lot did not have subdivitable rights. And we turned down that building permit. I think that's kind of really one of the things that started the discussion within the county. Like I say, if you, if it's small enough and it's truly accessory and it's, it's not way out away from the main house. That may be something to consider. One of the things I think I would like to consider. Is if I have a very expensive house with a detached. Accessory dwelling on it, even if it's small one. Am I really going to be wanting to, to rent that out to a stranger? Yes, for my in-laws or my cousin or, you know, my son or something. Yeah, no problem. I, I wouldn't have any issue with that. But once you start renting things out, you start getting into rental laws where you can't. Refuse people based on anything almost. So that's something you might want to take into consideration.
Matt, you have any other questions or comments?
No, I mean. You know, like you can have a duplex or you can have what we have now. I, I just think it gives it that, that look that if we're already in ag zoning. I, I think if you don't have a subdivitable lot, you should, it should be an attached.
Well, one thing I'd like to say about two family dwellings. If you have a two family dwelling, there is no size limit. on a two family dwelling. So they could both be four thousand square foot houses, as long as they're attached. You could argue right now in the ag zoning district that if I do an attached dwelling unit, it makes it a two family dwelling unit. So therefore it shouldn't be a limit on the size of that attached second house, as long as it's attached, because we do allow two family dwellings. So you can make that argument either way. But like I say, it's, I think the intent is really to provide something that is usable for the family. A lot of times it's converting a garage, second floor of a garage into a detached unit. We've had quite a few of them throughout the county right now that aren't legal. People have just gone ahead and done it. There's all kinds of arguments either way. I mean, that's why we're coming to you all for guidance. I don't see the issue with allowing attached units in the ag. No problem, because you can have a two family dwelling there and it can be, they can be any size. Then in the future, like I say, if you have a detached unit, somebody in the future is going to come to the county and want to change the law and say, hey, I want to sell that unit. I'm sure you all know, we always get requests for change of the ordinance. And that, that's always a possibility that, that would come up, someone come in and say, I want to split that little house off and create a lot and let's do a text amendment and do that. That's, that's a possibility too in the future. I mean, it's right now, you can't do it, but I guess they laws change.
But wouldn't it have to meet likes, if it's well and septic, it would have to meet requirements that there would have distances.
Yeah, well, septic, yes, it would have to meet. But like I say, if, if the, whatever they propose in that text change, they may say something entirely different that you don't have certain setbacks or like I say, it's really all all need to have on what, what you want to allow in the county.
One, good, Janice, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if we're talking about it being in the agricultural district, district, it's always going to be well and septic. I can't, I don't envision water and sewer being available in those areas, so.
Well, that, that's one thing we're talking right now, we're talking just about the ag and conservation zoning districts for this. Uh, I don't think we've talked about allowing it in the residential districts really yet. Because currently in the residential districts, you can have an attached accessory dwelling on any lot in the, as long as you've got the room for it, you can do an attached accessory dwelling. But if you're in a subdivision subdivision right now, you can't subdivide your lot. So you can't do a detached, detached unit. So in the residential, it's like I say, it would be either an attached accessory dwelling or a lot that's big enough to have subdivision rights where you could put a second house on.
Since we have finished the residential, we're not going to go back and relitigate that with this movement. What we're really looking for is direction for ag and conservation. I mean, the decision might be, you know what, agriculture, we feel because um typically larger lots, blah, 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 we could do a detached, maybe the conservation stays the same. Maybe the conservation, we only keep it attached. There could be various reasons for that, but really what we're looking for you all is that guidance of whether you feel it, it's, it's no difference whether the, it's attached or slightly offset as a detached.
So um, let me just make sure I'm framing the issue right, um, before I get to you, Michael and Stephen. I think what you're looking for tonight, we don't, do we have to make a definitive decision that we're okay with detached going forward forever and ever? Or can we basically say, we would give direction? Um, one choice for us tonight would be to give direction to you all to say, take us to the next step for detached. We'd be interested in what this looks like. What would be some restrictions that you think make sense? And bring some more detail, flush it out for us a little bit more in terms of what you think this would look like. Because I think that might help us understand what are the consequences of that, of going down that path. Um, and then we may, with that additional information, that might help form our thinking a little bit to say, you know what, we, we like that. And here are some maybe consequences of that we hadn't thought of that we like or we don't like. You know, I think, that's where I think we are, that you want that guidance from us, that we can say, let's, let's take a, let's go down that path a little ways. Fill in the picture for us somewhat. But then if we don't like where that's going or it brings about unintended consequences that we just don't see right now, we'd be in a position to say, you know what? I don't think we're going to want to go any further down the detached accessory dwelling unit path. Um, we think it leads to things that we don't care for. Linda, is that, is that a possibility? Can we do that tonight?
Absolutely, that is exactly what we're asking for is how, how do you want to approach this? And if for your comfort level, if you'd like us to come back saying, look at some of the parameters we've already outlined, what would that look like on a site plan? We'd be happy to do that, we'd be happy to give you some examples. Um, what can you reasonably fit in eight hundred square feet versus a thousand square feet? What would the bedroom sizes be? I think those are things that we could investigate um and come back to you all with. So I guess the idea is just, do, do you generally think it is a a way to move forward or just should we stop the conversation? And I also know we have some callers on the line. I know what, or maybe to specifically for this particular topic, if you want to hear from them as well first, then we can come back.
Uh, well, let me ask, Matt, you had your hand up, did you want to offer something else and then?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, if we have rules for residential houses that are the same as what we have now for the ag zoning currently, I don't know why we want to make an exception in the ag zone because it is the ag zone. Most stuff, even a lot of them that are in ag preservation, still have subdivitable lot rights. Um, and you can still build a tenant house on top of it, correct Jay? I mean, that's, that's a different subject.
Oh, yes, that, that's definitely a different subject. Um, because a tenant house right now, uh, basically you can have two of them on a farm greater than fifty acres. But they're mobile homes, they're not actual houses.
Um, okay, thank you. Michael, what are your thoughts before we hear from, uh, from members of the public? If you care to share them or if you'd like to.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with you, Jeff. And, and you know, I think we should probably get some more clarification and some examples to uh help fully understand what this is and where. My, my only uh question was where, where's, what's the genesis of this? Is this an, I'm, I can't say I'm the new guy anymore because is this an annual zoning code review? And, you know, something came up, yeah, we, we probably need to think about this. Is there a trend that we're seeing in the county where the need to address this? Have there been um projects done in the county that we, we found out about after the fact that required some need to address this? I'm just trying to understand the foundation.
We are in our comprehensive rezoning process as part of plan implementation. So we have been, we have undertaken a three-year effort to revise our zoning code. So that's why we're here and this is the final two districts, the ag and conservation. Um, and the reason this particular topic is, yes, there is a need, yes, it's been brought up by the citizens. But also we bring to you what are trends and best practices, not only in Carroll County, but outside of Carroll County. Accessory dwelling units are a very hot topic right now nationwide. Um, attached, detached, doesn't matter, all shapes and sizes, because we are in a housing crisis in this country. And so we need to look at creative ways. Um, and actually these aren't even, this isn't even unconventional or creative, I would say. ADUs have been around for forever. I mean, we, we, we've had this, I mean, there's all, you know, look at Fonzie in Happy Days. I mean, he lived in an ADU. Um, so, you know, this has been around since the fifties, not a new concept. Just what the proposal is, is we have them attached now. Some people may not be able to have them attached moving forward. I mean, not one, two, maybe they want that physical separation of two distinct, even though even the attached two entrances to everything. They may want that physical detachment to have that little bit of extra privacy or additional space. What we're seeking is to say in our ag zone, what, what, what is it to offset it? What is it to have a garage separate that may have an apartment? That sort of thing, just to give you that little something else. Or maybe the property is restricted or where your exact pad site is for your home, you can't put an addition on, you want your mom to move in or you, but you don't have that space. But you know what, off your driveway, a little to the left, you have room for eight hundred square feet. And that's where it would be suited. So that's, that's what we're asking, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, the last time that we revisited the zoning text in a comprehensive way was what year, Linda?
Never, when it was written.
Yeah, nineteen sixty something or something like that.
I, we, we've done changes, we've added, we've added zoning, like zoning wasn't a thing really until like the seventies. Then we started adding districts and enhancing it. But since we've had a code that covered soup to nuts, ag to industrial, we've never done a revision before. So we have to look at all of these things, we would be remiss if we didn't.
So it's a big deal. Very good. And then Stephen, not to put you on the spot, um, but any questions or thoughts from this? You certainly don't have to, there's lots of, this is, I know it's your first meeting.
Yeah, I, I think I kind of agree with you and, and everything, just, you know, a little bit more information and clarification and then uh I think we'll be good.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I hear Matt on these things, you know, why change it if it's not broken? I know that's not exactly what you're saying, Matt, that I'm just oversimplifying. But um, the one thing I'd be interested in, I think, as we go forward. So I guess the question is, do we tonight, is the commission saying, we're not interested in detached? Forget it, don't do anything else. My, my view, I think, and then listening to some of the comments, maybe I have agreement from some of you is um, the problem, I, I don't want to say no tonight. I think I'd be interested in hearing more information. Um, I was interested, Jay, when you talked about, you know, a, a family that had a detached garage, they didn't have sufficient room to meet current codes and you had to turn them down. That, that bothers me a little bit because I, I'm a, I'm a property rights advocate. And I think that, you know, to the extent we as the government can get out of people's way to let them use their properties in ways that meet their family's needs, in particular multi-generational needs, um, I'm a fan of that generally. But at the same time, you know, how far is too far? Like everything else we do on this commission, we're balancing out lots of very valid uh interests. But I'd like just a better sense of a, a better sense of this, because you've given one example, Jay, where the current code didn't allow a family to meet some needs that to me seem pretty reasonable in either an ag or a conservation uh district. And maybe we can do better. And since we don't revisit this very often, I wouldn't mind taking a little deeper dive and getting some more information before I would want to really support saying no more discussion around detached um accessory dwelling units. So I guess where I am is I, my view is I think I'd like to, I'd like to go a little further down the path. I'd like to hear more detail around what might be proposed for um detached accessory dwelling units and what sorts of needs, needs they can allow families to meet now that can't be met under current codes. Where is there possibility for abuse? If we do this, and then the size, you know, like Janice was pointing out, I think at the moment, I'm, I'm sort of hesitant to get rid of the eight hundred or one third, whichever is greater, because I could see that there may be need, again, family needs, legitimate needs. And we had come up with what may be an arbitrary number of eight hundred square feet that somebody came up with at some point in the past for reasons I don't understand at the moment. Um, I'd like to understand that and maybe those numbers should change or there's more to it. So I guess where I am is I would, I would put forward the idea of saying, let's, let's authorize the county folks to walk down this path a little further. Bring us more detail around some of those things as well as anything else that lets us see further down the path and lets us see what the consequences are, what opportunities it creates that don't currently exist and where it's subject to abuse. And um, and then let us, let us talk that through a little bit more. That would be my, my thinking. But I'm one voice, I'm just one. So why don't I run through, Pete, what do you think about that, that approach?
I, I like, I like what you're saying. And again, I don't really have, I don't have a preconceived idea of where this should go. Um, I, I would like to see um people have flexibility. At the same time, I don't want to turn it into the Wild West either, because again, I think having some certainty and some limitations just from a, you know, being able to protect the neighbor's rights too, Jeff. I want to be concerned about that because again, I don't think, again, unintended consequences, right? I mean, we don't know what somebody's going to use that, that um, that house for and who's going to live there. And that's not really something that Jay and his team want to be charged with regulating either. So I get it. Um, at the same time, like you're saying, multi-generational, so anyway, I'm waxing on, I agree with you, I agree with you. I think it's a good way to go. And then generally, I would like to see, I would like to see this allowed. Um, detached, attached. Um, I, I'd like to know the tenant thing that Matt brought up. Again, that, that's an interesting thing of, that, that is not a part of this. But again, if Matt doesn't mention that, I totally forget about it. So I, I'm glad you guys are all here because again, there, there's, there's more to it than just attached and detached.
Yeah, and I think that'd be helpful to have as part of the conversation, just because it helps us to see the, a more complete picture of how people, what options people have for the use of their property in these kinds of circumstances. I'm just going by my screen here, but Janice, what do you, what do you think about?
I, I think it's a good idea. And I have some floor plans, Linda, that um we've done for attached as well as some of the detached. So you can see what a thousand actually gives you. How that sits. And Matt, I will say, um, agricultural, as you well know, is ranging from smaller lots to larger, so, but I respect your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Matt, what do you think about this approach? Getting some more information and kind of noodling it through for another round?
I don't think it hurts to look at it a little bit more. Um, you know, like I said, I'm just concerned a little bit about basically you're giving more density to the ag lot if you do the detached. Cause you know, I know there's a lot of lots have already been developed. One that I can think of in Carroll County and several in Frederick County where someone goes out and builds a big shop and puts a home in the corner of it, which is not really the intention of having a, a shop. So, but yeah, more information would be okay. And I think for, for like Peter, that, you know, the whole tenant thing, you know, because I am definitely not a fan of trailers. I wish we could change something with not having trailers. If a guy wants to build a house and it'd be limited to twelve, fourteen hundred or fifteen hundred square foot of a tenant house would be a lot nicer.
And you know, related to that, uh, out in Missouri where we have a cabin, one of the things I hear about a lot are these chouses and they're shop houses. There are these, these uh pole buildings and just what you said, Matt. In fact, I know some folks, they're building a very nice chouse. And they're going to live there while they build a house. But I'd be curious about, about that too. Where does that fit in to this? Maybe it doesn't, maybe we don't allow it, but again, just something to think about, because on ag properties, um, I see it, I see these kinds of things happening. There's a real trend for it in certain parts of the country. Michael, what do, what are your views on taking this approach? Getting some more information and then um being able to evaluate it after, after we get that?
Yep, all in, completely agree.
Thank you. Stephen? All right, well, then I think um we have a consensus here, Linda and Jay. So are you, you all clear about how you can help us out, taking it a little, taking us a little further down the road and the kinds of issues we'd be interested in hearing about to better be informed?
Yeah, I have no problems with that at all.
All right, and Linda, you said we have some people on the line uh from the public that would like to comment on these things?
Yes, we have four members um of the public on the line. Um, if Laura can bring up the timer, um, and Laura has their names, she'll call the names of each um speaker wishing to give comments this evening.
Okay, very good. And I, as I've said before, when we're in person, I'm going to hold you to the three minutes, just because it's in fairness to everybody. Um, so um, you've got the full three minutes, but um at three minutes and one second, um, I'm going to ask you to be done. In the world that I live in, that's, that's the way we live and it seems pretty fair.
The first person that signed up, we have a Barry Goff.
The first person that signed up, we have a Barry Goffnauer. He signed up to speak about solar panels on farm locations. I'm not sure if he stills wants to use his time tonight. Barry. Okay, it's no Barry. The second person we had sign up is Caroline Lowe. I believe she's on the line.
I, I am. And I really, I really want to say that I appreciate the proposal that you're making for the test trial for this project to see what the consequences will be. Because I don't think, um, I'm not aware if that was made for the solar, for the solar, uh, for the ordinance, uh, to allow solar on Ag land. And I just want to say that that I am, that I, I want to express my opposition of the change of agricultural zoning that now allows the byright industrial use of agricultural land. And I want to propose that Carroll County land, uh, that's zoned agricultural be used for biological farming for the purpose of cows having calves, seeds producing crops and, and that industrial solar be placed on brownfields, landfills, big box stores and rooftops. I'm really shocked that as a conservative county that, um, that we've now adopted what feels to me like a very liberal uh, a solar policy. And I'm not even sure if this isn't the most liberal solar policy in our state and, and I, I want to check into that a little further. As a fourth generation farmer, I'm appalled that our farming county will be losing our biological Ag land five to 20 acres at a time as solar is not farming. And, and let's call it what it is. It's, it's industrial. I receive multiple letters weekly now from solar investors wanting our farm because the word is out with Carroll County Commissioners have signed. And it's now been made very easy, uh, and, and, um, and it's been so easy that why wouldn't every out-of-state solar investor not beat our doors down? From what I'm reading, the green energy is not guaranteed to even stay in Maryland, let alone Carroll County. And our beautiful county will be destroyed for the sole benefit of the out-of-state solar investor who doesn't give one rip about us. And once our acreage is gone, then, then it's too late to realize the damage. Uh, industrial solar farms should be a zoning case-by-case review with neighborhood input as it affects everybody that surrounds it. Industrial solar farms drastically change the landscape of the area. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you very much.
The next person to sign up to speak is Joy Daughtry. Is Joy Daughtry on the line? Okay. And then the fourth person was Suzanne Swisher.
Good evening. I have been following, uh, this issue intently for the past, uh, year and a half. And I'd like to refer you to BZA case 6313 of May 2021, where a lot of information was presented and a strong case was made to request a detached ADU which would meet the same size restrictions as an attached ADU at about 1,200 square foot on a lot just under five acres and with full neighbor support. Thank you to the commission for your willingness to do better. I would nominate our situation as a prototype. Regarding the current lack of size limitations for detached ADUs, I would suggest that 800 square feet max may be too restrictive and ADA non-compliant for two bedrooms and someone who may be in a power wheelchair. There may need to be a variance considered on a case-by-case basis. I agree with Ms. Eisenberg when she says that detached dwelling units are consistent with the goal in the county plan of providing a diversity of housing options for residents. The county commissioners have consistently stated that they always have the safety, security, well-being and quality of life where our Carroll County community first and foremost as the highest priority. The concerns about accessory dwelling units being rented out to someone unrelated to the family in the main house can be addressed by codes prohibiting that and having owners file an annual statement with the zoning administrator verifying that the conditions that were granted for use of the detached ADU remain the same. The conditions allowing the detached ADU do not convey to a subsequent purchaser and limited to immediate family only, sharing the same driveway access as primary dwelling and aesthetically aligned with the architecture of the primary dwelling or any other imposed conditions. According to the minutes that I reviewed, Mr. Bale had given an example of a BZA that was recently rejected because the applicants did not have the needed subdivision rights. He stated, or at least the minute stated, that the ADU would have been two-thirds the size of the original house. I hope he was not referring to our case number 6313 because we were requesting a size one-third the square footage of the primary house. Commissioner Weaver, and I support and thank you, suggests that the same regulations and requirements be made for detached and attached. I would recommend that more research be done to show the impact of this in other regions of the country such as the analysis that was extensively performed by the AARP and the American Planning Association showing the impact on the infrastructure of the community. Your recommendation, according to the last, uh, meeting minutes that I read, stated that you felt ADUs were best suited in designated growth areas where public services and infrastructure are readily available. And I don't know what the rationale that would be when the benefits of a multi-generational household prevail.
Suzanne, you're out of time. Are you able to sort of wrap it up?
Uh, yes, I was, um, I have another comment. When the commissioners have always stated that the safety, security, well-being and quality of life for our community is first and foremost and the highest priority. I do agree that unrestricted detached ADUs would have a negative impact on the environment and public facilities. However, detached ADUs should be restricted. And I would ask that you would consider applying the same guidelines for an attached ADU. And, uh, given special exceptions, most especially for disabled elderly family members with wheelchair needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Do we have any other callers or is that it, Laura?
No one else signed up? I'm not sure if there's anybody else on the line that wishes to speak that didn't sign up previously.
Hearing none. All right. Any other comments from the commission members? Hearing none. All right. Linda, thank you for, uh, the presentation. And then I think, I think you have, uh, a good sense of, uh, where we'd like to have this go for discussion purposes next time.
Yep, we'll do our research and come back to you, um, with a proposal and some additional information.
Excellent. This is Chris Hyde. I'm sorry, if I could jump in just for one second. If the next meeting, um, where we discuss this could be an in-person meeting and perhaps we could have some of the folks from the work group attend as well. Um, because I, I think there was a pretty strong consensus from the work group that, uh, we thought the coach remain as is. Um, but we'd love, we'd love to have the discussion and I think in person would be much better, um, to have that discussion.
Yeah. May 17th, which is our typical business meeting. So that will be the next time that we discuss this.
So that will address the in-person issue that Chris was just mentioning. So, yeah, that, I think it helps us too. I mean, it's one thing to talk to each other in these little square boxes, but I think it's much more helpful to have a dialogue in person where we can see each other and, and talk about it more. So that'd be great. If there's no other business, then, um, I'd be happy to entertain a motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Very good. We will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.